Welcome to the Carson City School District Board of Trustees Meeting. Today is Tuesday, January 14, 2025. We are going to call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. And we will move on to Agenda Item Number One, Adoption of the Agenda as submitted, and this is for possible action.
Ma'am Vice President, I would move that we adopt the agenda omitting item number 14.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Mike Walker, second by Richard Varner. Any board discussion? See none. Any public comment? See none. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Two, Flag Salute by Michelle Peterson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Trustee Peterson. Agenda Item Number Three, Superintendent's Report, and this is for information only, Superintendent Feeling.
Thank you, President Ramirez. And just a note, with item 14, our auditor, we're expecting to be here tonight, had a fell ill, we'll say, and just had an emergency come up. So that item will be brought back at the next meeting, just to make sure he's here to be able to present that as as our third-party independent financial auditor. Second semester has started, and everyone, including the kids, are really excited to be back in school. So that's awesome. Tomorrow night is the Governor's State of the State Address. That will be, kind of, it's not exactly the start of the legislative session, but it is effectively the start. The budget will come out soon after that, and we'll start tearing that apart, but just very excited to get this process going. There's a lot at stake for us, so we're very interested in what is going to be happening. And I will be updating you regularly as bills come up and information comes out that impacts the school district. Last thing for all of you, just remember that your financial disclosure statements with the Secretary of State's office are due tomorrow. So if you haven't done that, please get that done. If you have any questions, please call me or Renee tomorrow, and we will help take care of you. That's all I have.
Thank you for those reminders. Okay, so Agenda Item Number Four, Board Reports, Board Member Comments, and this is also for information only. We will start off with Carson High School Representatives. And that's Christopher and Diane. She's not there? Okay. And I would also invite Pioneer representatives to come to the podium, too.
Good evening, Board. My name is Christopher Ashley Eskridge. And currently in the leadership classroom, we are currently working on Winter Fest, which is going to be happening the first week of February. And I will get more information on that as the meetings come. And then we also currently have basketball and wrestling happening. And then wrestling is having their senior night tomorrow, January 15, starting at 5:45 at Carson High School in the big gym. And then upcoming events, we are starting our class election. So we're going to have elections of the student body officers on Tuesday, and then the class election is going to be happening in February. And then we're also going to be recruiting middle schoolers starting next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Now Pioneer representatives.
First of all, I'd like to say welcome to the new trustees. I came in for, I think this is their first board meeting?
Yes, it is.
Well, yay! Welcome! Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Caitlin Nguyen.
And Maggie Uzell.
And will be presenting Pioneer's announcements for this month.
All right. I'm excited to tell all of you that we're kicking off the new year with many plans. And as for this month, Speech and Debate Team will be competing in North Valleys this weekend, January 17th and 18th. And our next Panther Painting Pizza and Punch Night will be January 30.
Four Pioneer students were recognized for their improvements in attendance, and they'll receive brand-new bikes from the Bike Habitat. It'll take place on Wednesday, January 29, at the Fandango at 5:30 PM. The students that were recognized are Kaylee Melendrez from 9th grade, Tyson Downing from 10th grade, Joseph Kuz from 11th grade, and Charlie Martin from 12th grade. Kylie Melendrez and Noah Moore will also receive four Tahoe Night Monster Hockey tickets.
All right. In addition to celebrating the improved attendance for some of our students, the 9th grade class had the best attendance overall for the first semester. Therefore, those students with 90% or better were invited to a pizza party with their parents on Friday, January 17, from 10:50 to 11:25 AM, which is being sponsored by the United Federal Credit Union here on Highway 50.
Before we end off the announcements for Pioneer for this month, I want to give a huge shout-out to the following students who had perfect attendance for the first semester: Tiberius Bryan, Zaren Burdette, Kiana Chera-Gilani, Hayden Carpus, Kylie Crossmaize, Bria Pierce, Olivia Somerfeld, and Noah Williams. Thank you. This is Caitlin.
And Maggie, signing off.
Thank you all very much. Okay, thank you very much, girls. Have a great semester. All right, next is Nevada Association of School Boards, NASB updates.
Thank you. They're a hard act to follow. You guys did a very good job. Thank you. As everyone knows here on the Board, we had our meeting this weekend in Reno for training. And then also on Friday night, we had a joint board meeting between the Directors and the Executive Committee. And there are several items that were discussed, and I'll touch on some of them briefly, just since you guys were not there. Most of you were not there. We had a debrief on the 2024 conference, and it was relayed that most of the comments that came in were very positive. And if you can believe it or not, 2025 conference is already starting to be planned. And a motion was made and accepted that we try to have it again at the GSR in Reno. It'll be held in December, but the dates in December have not been set yet. But they should be set before long, as soon as they get it squared away with the venue. And then we had a legislative update, was provided by Tom Clark Solutions, and he's the NASB's lobbyist for this upcoming session, and Dr. Nicolet, who is the Executive Guest Committee Member for his legislative matters. One thing they really wanted to stress is the NASB Day at the Legislature will be held on March 5. And so please let Renee know as soon as possible, so she can get ahold of Rick Harris, because they got to make seating arrangements. We're going to be seated with our local representative. So they really encourage everybody to try to attend. It's March 5, and the time and any other details will be forthcoming.
Trustee Varner, just in addition to that, there will be an additional PD day on March 6.
I got it coming. Sorry. At this time, there are approximately 100 BDRs that addresses education, and these will all be tracked and testimony provided if needed. And then Superintendent Feeling also mentioned the Governor's State of the State Address tomorrow night. And I'm sure that he'll be discussing his educational priorities. So if you get a chance, you might want to listen to that, so we can kind of get a feeling of what his ideas are for the upcoming session. One particular bill to be watched is BDR 319. And if this is passed, it would place a student body member as a sitting voting member on the school board. And they would not have to be elected by the general public, but they'd be elected by their student body. And that has been introduced, or will be introduced.
Richard, do you know, is there a grade requirement?
I don't know if it's going to be a junior or senior. Mike, do you know?
I don't know that detail, Molly.
Yeah.
I think it's, you know, at this point, it's still being worked out, all the fine details.
Yeah, all the fine details have not been worked out. It's just a BDR at this point. We had a financial report for 2024. NASB is in great financial shape at this point. So there's no concerns. It was brought up, or any concerns expressed by any of the members. And if anybody's interested in tracking these, or some of the bills, you can track them, and I'll try to get this right, by going to the Nevada Electronic Legislative Information System. And you can track the status of the bills if you so desire. Not all of them, because I think if you want to track them all, there's a cost involved. But there's, I think, 15 bills or BDRs that you can track for free. Professional training was held on Saturday, and the first session was oriented towards the new board members. It was Orientation Number Two. And the following session was on Advanced Leadership Skills for Improved Student Success. It was addressing improving school board effectiveness. And it was a real, I thought, a lot of good information was presented. And one of the things that the instructor wanted us to do is come back and let people know one thing that we learned from the training. So the thing, the biggest thing I took away from the training was the positive impact that a well-functioning school board can have on student achievement. Some of the save the dates, March 5, we talked about, Day of the Legislature. March 6 is Professional Development, includes new board member Orientation Number Three, will be held in Carson City. The 4th through the 6th is the National School Boards Association Conference in Atlanta, Georgia. And then May 16, there's another joint meeting between the Executive Board and the Directors, be Virginia City. And then May 17, another Professional Development Day will be held in Virginia City. And that's my long, drawn-out report, and I apologize for that.
Thank you, Trustee Varner. We will move on to announcement, board announcements. Do you want to go ahead and start, Trustee Varner?
Yes. For Boardwork Bray, Principal Riquetta would like to thank all their families for practicing math facts over the break as part of their Frosty Challenge. For the students who grew 20% on the post-test, they will receive their hot chocolate and extra recess on Friday. Their next challenge will be the Hardy Challenge, and the post-test will be on February 12. And she encourages everybody to keep practicing math facts at home. Then if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and move on to Fritsch Elementary.
Please.
Please share, Principal Brown wanted us to share that they are very excited that Beverly Singleton, a member of the Educational Support Group at Fritsch, is receiving the RISE Award. She is one of two people in the state to be recognized by Governor Lopardo, and she will be representing Nevada at the national level. And they are also pleased to announce that their chronic absenteeism rate is 10%. And he wanted to thank all the parents for helping with this goal. And for people that don't know what the RISE Award is, it's a federal award, and it's recognizing inspiring school employees that, the school employees who provide exceptional service to students. So congratulations to Ms. Bev Singleton. I think she's greatly deserving of the award, and it reflects well on the Carson City School District. So thank you. That's my report.
Thank you. Now you can catch your breath. Okay, we will move on to Molly Walt.
Thank you. So for Elementary, Empire, sorry, Empire Elementary School, things are going great at Empire. Their Winter Wonderland Dance raised enough money for their PTO to buy a bag full of playground equipment for every teacher in the building. Having Mr. and Mrs. Feeling play Santa and Mrs. Claus helped tremendously, and they want to thank you very much for being there and supporting the event.
We get a sample of the ho, ho, ho.
And they are also working on a STEM tank for the spring, where students are creating projects based on STEM standards that will present to a community-based panel. They did their project introductions to their peers last week, and they are all very excited. And then also, Adrian Wiggins got a huge grant for Empire for a class set of VR headsets, not quite sure what those are, and a curriculum through Class VR that is going to really expand their students' access to amazing educational experiences and help build background knowledge in all content. And then, so that's it for Empire. But I wanted to mention really quick, because I know it's a huge event, and it may sell out, but the Father-Daughter Dance, that is the fundraiser for leadership, Carson High Leadership, FBLA, and FBLA, tickets are on sale now. So please visit Eventbrite to find the information to purchase your Father-Daughter Dance tickets, which is April 25 from 6 to 9. For a couple, it's $50, and for an individual or an additional daughter is $15. So buy your tickets now, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Walt. Trustee Clappam?
Thank you. I have one report tonight from Ms. Robinson at Carson Middle. Says they're excited to be back in school. All students should have received their report cards last week through the mail. Volleyball season is underway, and wrestling is about to begin. PTO is planning some fun family events for the second semester, and some information will be shared soon on that. And they're looking forward to a great semester.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Clappam. I also want to, and forgive me, I should have asked this sooner. I want to give our new trustees an opportunity to, if you're willing to say something, or if you want to say something, you're welcome to do that. Otherwise, you will be assigned schools in a little bit. But at this point in time, if you would like to say something, feel free to do so.
All right, well, I am Rebecca Roberts, for those who don't know me, and I'm just excited to be here. This is a great group of people. I've only met you a handful of times at the conferences over the last month, but it's, there's already such a good camaraderie. So I'm excited to be here, excited to represent the students. Kids mean a lot to me. I've got three currently enrolled, three at home, so it's going to be a good four years.
Wonderful. And you're representing District Number?
Two.
Thank you. Michelle?
Hi, I'm Michelle Peterson. I'm representing District 7, which is over by Seelager and kind of wraps around, dodges a few schools as it wraps around. So Seelager is the only one in it. But I've got four kids that are either in the district or have gone through the district, two that have graduated out, two that are currently at Carson High School. Kind of, I'll just say the same thing that I said at our swearing, that kids have always been a sweet spot for me, and serving them and ensuring that they know that they've got a grown-up on their side, because so many don't. And feeling invisible is pretty awful. And so being someone that's invested in them and cheering them on and securing opportunities for them to thrive is something that's always mattered to me. And so I've done it in many ways, none quite this large. But I'm excited to step up here and to serve in this way. And I will echo what Rebecca said. We've had several opportunities to bond through trainings already, and it's a pretty sturdy, solid group. Can't, yeah, can't say anything bad about any of it yet. And I won't, not yet. That's not the right word. But thank you, guys.
Thank you. Trustee Walker?
Well, Trustee Peterson, when you do want to say something negative, start with member Clappam. So great things are happening at Seelager Elementary School. So Mr. Feeling mentioned the State of the State Address that's happening tomorrow. Well, they are excited. The 5th graders in their choir are going to be singing at the event. And they actually have one student who will be doing the National Anthem solo. So it's going to be an exciting time for Seelager. They will represent us well, I'm sure. They also would like parents to know that the second round or the third round of Pirates Club, that morning tutoring is going to be starting back up. So please keep an eye out for notices from the teachers so that you could get your child signed up. And the final report is, they have been doing their map testing, and they have very promising data so far. So Mrs. Pryor is super proud of the work of everyone. And then I would just welcome both Trustee Roberts and Trustee Peterson. So it is a great team, and you're going to fit in just well.
Thank you. And from Eagle Valley Middle School, Dr. Lee Conley reported that they have been utilizing the Exact Path during the advisory period for remediation. Students are assigned skills that have been identified as deficient from map assessment. Based on the first semester, Exact Path results are 636 students made percentile growth on winter map for either or both math and reading. 9,566 Exact Path trophies were earned, which equates to that many new skills being mastered by the students. These were skills that were identified as deficient by map assessments. And also for chronic absenteeism rate, it decreased from 19.5% to 17% for the 2023-2024 year. Students receive monthly rewards for trophies earned. They are trying to find a venue or event for the end of the year which could accommodate all students who reach their map growth goal, which is, which could be up to 100 students. So they are looking for a place to have it. So if anybody knows of a place that could accommodate 800-plus students, please reach out to Dr. Conley. And that concludes my report. Okay, so moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, Discussion and Possible Action on Election of Officers for the Carson City School District Board of Trustees, including Board President, Vice President, and Clerk for the ensuing year. And this is for possible action. So we have been giving on our packet the suggested process for us to follow. So we will see if we can do this. So my understanding is that we can open it up to, for the nominations for all three positions, and then take a motion at the end, if that's okay with everyone? All three, if that's okay with you guys?
I'd like to make a motion. Our nomination.
Okay, go ahead.
I nominate Trustee Ramirez as for President of the Board.
Thank you. I accept the nomination. And then we will move on to open the nominations for the Vice President position.
Don't we need a second for the nomination of President?
Did I already mess it up?
We don't need a second for the nomination. Once we take a motion, we'll have a motion in a second.
At the end, correct? Okay.
I will make a motion then for Trustee Walker as Vice President.
Okay. Trustee Walker, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Thank you. So at this point, there are no further nominations. Are there any further nominations?
I'll make one for Clerk Molly Walt.
Okay, so then at this point, I need to close the one for the Vice President. Okay, so then if there are no further nominations, I will close the nominations for Vice President. And I will move on to open nominations for the Clerk.
I'd like to nominate Molly Walt.
Okay, Molly Walt, would you accept the nomination? Thank you. So at this point, are there any further nominations for the Clerk? Okay, at this time, I will close nominations for the Clerk. And then at this moment, I will, I believe, I will take a motion for all three positions. And again, this is a... This is...
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Let me get it here. I make a motion that we accept Trustee Ramirez as President of the Board, Mike Walker as Vice President, and Molly Walt as Clerk for the upcoming ensuing year.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by our Trustee Varner, second by Trustee Clappam. Any, any public comment? See none? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Yes.
Could I just say, President Ramirez, that I think that was as seamless as we've had in the last recent years. So even though you're nervous, you did a great job.
I am very nervous. Thank you so much. And because I am nervous, I wanted to be prepared and write, and I wrote something, so if you don't mind, I will go ahead and read what I prepared. I thank you all for your vote of confidence. I recognize our former Board Presidents, Mr. Joe Casioppo, Mrs. Laura Crossman, and Mrs. Stacy Wilkie left some big shoes to fill. I am ready to give it my best. I am thankful that we have Mr. Mike Walker and Mr. Richard Varner, who I will be reaching out for your guidance, since you have been serving, since you have served in this role. Since I joined the Board, I have always appreciated the respect and collaboration amongst all of us Board members, as well as with the Superintendent and his staff and legal counsel. My goal is that we continue working together collaboratively and that we collaborate with Superintendent Feeling in supporting his goals and in seeking for solutions in the areas where we need to make improvements to ensure all students have the essential skills when they graduate from high school, so they can feel confident that they can make a positive difference in our community. For our new trustees, Michelle Peterson and Rebecca Roberts, we welcome you to our team, and we are very excited that you are part of the Board, and we look forward to your contributions. So thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay, at this point, if we can take a 10-minute recess? Okay, so see, I am nervous. I'm forgetting stuff. Okay, I'm sorry. So we have been informed that one of our outstanding employees of the district, Ms. Renee Cortez, had a birthday this week, was it this week? Last week, and we want to congratulate her, and we want to wish her a very happy birthday.
Oh, my word.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Okay, now we are going to take a 10-minute break.
I didn't know if we were going to sing or not, but we do have...
I didn't know if we were going to sing or not, but we do have... This is for discussion and possible action on designation of the day, place, and time for the regular meetings of the Carson City School District Board of Trustees for the ensuing year. And this is for possible action.
So, Madam President, I move that except as otherwise noted due to special circumstances, the Carson City School District Board of Trustees designate the second and fourth Tuesday of the month as the regular meeting days with a start time of 6:30 p.m. in the Robert Crowell Boardroom of the Carson City Community Center, 851 East William Street, Carson City, Nevada.
And I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Vice President Walker and second by trustee Varner. Are there any board discussions? Seeing none? Any public comment? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we will continue with agenda item number seven. And this is discussion and possible action on the annual adoption and reaffirmation of existing bylaws and policies of the Carson City School District Board of Trustees. And again, this is for possible action. Go ahead.
I'll go ahead and make the motion. I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the adoption and reaffirmation of existing CCSD bylaws and policies.
Okay. Motion by trustee Varner, second by trustee Walt. Any board discussion? Seeing none? Any public comment? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And we are going into agenda item number eight. And this is discussion and possible action on annual authorization for the Carson City School District to research, apply for, budget, report, and monitor all processes associated with the management of all federal, state, local, foundation, and private grant funding. And this is for possible action. Superintendent Fueeling?
Thank you, president Ramirez. Just magically appear. The school district likes money. And with this item, you are authorizing myself and Mrs. Fuson and Mr. Winward and our grants manager, Cassie Clark, to do all that there can be around applying for, managing, monitoring, all grants for the school district. So, again, it's a bit of a formality, but asking for your approval for us to do all of that work for the district.
Go ahead, Molly.
I'll go ahead and make the motion. I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees designate the Superintendent Chief Academic Officer, CAO, Chief Financial and Operations Officer, CFOO, and the Grants Manager as the authorized representatives for any and all federal, state, local, foundation, and private grant funding.
Second.
Okay, so motion by trustee Walt, second by Vice President Walker. Any board discussion? Seeing none? Any public comment? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, superintendent. And then we move on to agenda item number nine. Discussion and possible action on the appointment of trustees to serve on various committees and associations, including the following, for the ensuing year. And this is for possible action. And superintendent Fueeling, you going to help me with this?
I serve at your pleasure.
Okay, so then at this point, let's see. Do we, let's see, should we go ahead and go over the... Okay. So, then we're going to go ahead and go down the list of the individuals who have served in the different organizations. And then you can let us know if you are interested in staying in covering those or if you want to pass it on to other Board member. As of what we had from last year is Director of the Nevada Association of School Board, and that was Richard Varner. Would you like to stay on?
Yes, I would.
Okay. And then alternate Director of the Nevada Association of School Boards, if it's okay with you, trustee Varner, I'd like to stay as the alternate Director. And then Molly Walt, a member of the Carson City Parks and Recreation. Are you interested in staying?
Yes, please.
Okay. And then Mike Walt, Mike Walt, Mike Walker? Mike Walker, member of the Debt Management Commission?
I would appreciate if somebody else wanted to take over that committee for the year.
Can you tell me a little bit more about it?
You know, typically, it meets twice a year. Once in January, February-ish, and then once in the summer. It's not a lot of work, but because we nominated Mike Walt, that might be why I didn't get invitations this year, is what we realized the other day. So, it's not a lot of work, but we do have a representative and the Board of Supervisors has a representative and there are some community members that serve.
Yes, I would. Yes, I would be honored to serve.
So, Molly, you'll take over that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And then I would invite someone to take over the Partnership Carson City, if possible. I've served on that committee for the last two years and I believe it would be good for someone else to consider going and representing the Board.
If you don't mind, we talked about this earlier and I'd be interested if nobody else is.
You're interested? Okay, wonderful. Richard Varner? Okay. Very good. And then Mike Walker and Laura Crossman were serving as legislative liaisons. Mike, are you still interested in staying as a liaison?
I am, and I think it makes sense with me being the president and the...
Wonderful. Thank you. And then if it's okay with everyone, I'd like to join you, if that's okay?
Madam President, would you mind if there were three members?
Not at all. On the contrary, that would be helpful. I'm interested.
Okay. Perfect. Wonderful. And then Mike Walker and Matt Clappam, members of the Superintendent's School Naming Committee?
I think this would be a great committee for our two new trustees to take over for us. It's a lot of work, but I know you have the skill set.
You're really taking that away from me?
Okay. Are we good? With both new trustees? Yes? Okay. Okay, so then Michelle and Rebecca. Okay. And then Richard Varner, member of the Superintendent's Joint Advisory Committee?
I'm still interested if nobody else is.
Okay, you'll stay there? Okay. And then Representative to Carson City School Foundation, I believe I need to serve on this committee? Okay. And then Member of the Student Attendance Review Board and, let's see, also known as SARB. Molly and I have served on the committee. I am interested in staying as a representative. Are you also interested in staying, yes, as an alternate? Okay, wonderful. And then Representative of the Emergency Operations Development Committee? Anybody interested?
I can do it.
Yeah, I'm willing.
I don't know what it is, but I haven't put my name in that yet.
Whoever has served on that committee, would you please share?
So, I would say that you would be a great person with your background for that. Trustee Clappam? You meet with the safety team of the district. There's usually representatives from the Sheriff's Department, our SROs, and review safety procedures and emergency operations and kind of make sure that we have our ducks in a row. And so you would be our representative on that.
Is that all right?
Trustee Clappam, you said you would accept? Okay, great. And then Representative on the Multi-Tier Systems of Support, also known as MTSS, for the district leadership team? Richard Varner, you were serving on that committee?
Yeah, I enjoyed serving on it, so I would do it again if nobody else wanted to.
Okay. Okay. Is anybody else interested in serving as an alternate? Any of the new trustees? Do you want to... Trustee Varner, would you want to explain a little bit about what the committee is about so they can know, they can have some information?
What it is, is the committee, the MTSS committee, meets on an ongoing basis in where they discuss the ongoing operations of the program. And it's a multi-tiered system of support. And it's just how they can better assist kids who are in need of some kind of assistance.
Are the meetings for these typically daytime or nighttime, midweek?
They're usually during the daytime. Yeah.
Are they usually on set days or is it just whenever they get scheduled?
Yeah, I, yes, yeah. Yeah. I work Mondays and Fridays. I have my full-time job Mondays and Fridays. So, if it's a midday, midweek, I would be dodging those days. Okay? Okay?
And again, you would be an alternate. Richard Varner sits on the committee and then you would be the alternate.
Okay. Sounds good. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so at this point in time, superintendent Fueeling, did we miss anything that you can think of? No? Okay. Then I think at this point, we entertain a motion?
So, I'll move that we appoint the following trustees to the following committees. So, trustee Varner as the Director of the Nevada Association of School Boards and trustee, or president Ramirez as the alternate. We have Clerk Walt as the member of the Carson City Parks and Recreation Team, as well as a member of the Debt Management Commission. Trustee Varner as a member of Partnership Carson City. Trustee Walker, Ramirez, and Walt as the legislative liaisons. Trustees Roberts and Peterson will be our representatives for the Superintendent's... Trustees Roberts and Peterson will be our Representatives for the Superintendent's School Naming Committee. Trustee Varner, the Representative of the Superintendent's Joint Advisory Committee. Trust, President Ramirez as a Representative to the Carson City School Foundation. Trustees Ramirez and Walt for Representative School Attendance Review Board. Trustee Clappam as Representative for the Emergency Operations Development Committee, and Trustees Varner and Peterson as Representative on the Multi-Tiered System of a Support District Leadership Team.
Okay, so motion by Trustee Walker, and second by Trustee Walt. Any board discussion? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Yes, go ahead.
And I would just say, for Trustee Roberts, if there's a committee you wanted to team up with one of us, and just kind of jump in somewhere, let whoever it is, and we'll just have you be part of the team.
Thank you, thank you, that's a good suggestion. Okay, wonderful, then we will move on to Agenda Item Number Nine. And this is discussion and possible action on the appointment of trustees to serve on various committees and associations. Are we over here? Cease, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. Agenda Item Number Ten. Discussion and possible action on the appointment of trustees to serve as individual liaisons to schools within the Carson City School District, and this is for possible action. So, we have the list of the schools and the trustees that have represented those schools for the last year. I will go down the list if it's okay with everyone, and then you can let me know if you are interested in staying, representing that school, or if you would like to pass it on to another trustee. So, Trustee Richard Varner, Fritch Elementary School?
Yes.
You'll stay? Okay. And then, Boarderwick Bray Elementary School, Richard Varner?
Yes, if no one else wants it.
Okay. Do we have anybody else interested? Okay. Molly Walt, Carson High School?
Uh, no, I'll allow someone else.
Okay, is anybody else interested in taking Carson High School? Okay, Michelle, thank you. All right, and Pioneer Academy? Is anybody interested in taking Pioneer Academy? If not, I'll take it. And then Empire Elementary School, Molly Walt?
Yes, I'd like to stay.
Okay. And then, Mike Walker, Siliger Elementary School?
Yes.
You'll stay?
Yes.
Okay. And then Fremont Elementary School, anybody interested?
I'll take it.
Okay. Rebecca? Okay. And then, Matt Kaplan, Carson Middle School? Okay. And then Eagle Valley Middle School, if any of the new trustees is interested, I'd be happy to pass that on. Any, you're gonna be taking Mark Twain? Okay, very good, so then.
I'll take Eagle Valley if.
Eagle Valley, okay.
Yeah.
Eagle Valley, okay. So, Matt? Okay. And then, Mark Twain Elementary School? Trustee Clappam, do you want to stay? Or is anybody else interested?
Michelle would like it, yeah.
Michelle, Michelle, okay.
Okay, can we add Carson Monasori? We can't. So we wouldn't be able to add them? All right.
Okay. And then Bray Building. Superintendent Phelan, you mentioned that we could omit that?
Yeah, the, the program that was there, the pre-K programs, they moved over to Empire Elementary School, so there's really few students that are actually in that building anymore.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so then that, is everyone okay with the list? Okay, so then I will entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion. So I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the following appointment of trustees to serve as individual liaisons to the following school. Trustee Varner, Fritch Elementary School. Trustee Varner, Boarderwick Bray Elementary School. Trustee Roberts, Fremont Elementary. Trustee Peterson, Mark Twain Elementary and Carson High School. Trustee Walt, Empire Elementary School. Vice President Walker, Sealer Girl Elementary School. Trustee Clappam, Carson Middle School, and Eagle Valley Middle School, and President Ramirez, Pioneer Academy.
Okay, second, okay, so motion by Trustee Walt, second by Trustee Walker. Any board discussion? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, thank you so much. Okay. So then, Agenda Item Number Eleven, and this is Association Reports, and this is for discussion only. Do we have a representative from the Association? I don't believe we do, okay. And then, Agenda Item Number Twelve, Public Comment. I was, do we have in-person public comment? And I was informed that we do not have online public comments, so we're gonna omit that section. And then we will move on to Agenda Item Number Thirteen. And this is Information Update on the School Resource Officers, SRO, Program in the Carson City School District. This is for discussion only. Sheriff Ken Furlong and Sergeant Taylor Maris. Welcome.
Thank you, for the record, Sheriff Kenny Furlong. Just a real quick kind of acknowledgement of the School Resource Officer, or if you want to call it, or Educational Institution Systems. It's, obviously, we're gonna have some, a little bit of a briefing here, but it's important that we take the opportunity to acknowledge, in Carson City, the Sheriff's Office is in collaboration or partnership with the school board. You want me to move it closer? Thank you. Gotcha. The Sheriff's Office and Carson City work closely together to provide the School Resource Officer Program. That's not the only program here in Carson City. UNR also provides officers to our college institutions, but they also work closely with us. Other agencies are behind the scenes, and just as valid, or just as vital and important. We have the Honorable Garrett Pruitt, our newest District Attorney who's here tonight. He's the one keeping me in line in case I go off track. And, and I have Ms. Ally Bannister, our Chief of Juvenile Justice. All of these programs work very, very in sync with one another all of the time. And it's, it's vitally important that we keep this board updated on what we're doing, and how we're doing, and, and the results of those, those activities that are going on. I, I would kind of go in my closing comment with a three-way. AJ and I spoke today, as well as Ms. Bannister. If, if I were to assess the leadership of our SRO program, both AJ, Ally, and I place Sergeant Maris, who's gonna have an opportunity here in a second, in the highest of esteem. Just a tremendous asset in, in a very challenging role. Sergeant Maris also is our supervisor, if you will, over our most team, our mental outreach team, which is vital to this program as well. So he has an enormous amount of responsibilities, and he has a great team that, that backs him up. But before we get on to Sergeant Maris, I would like to introduce Ms. Bannister, because without the support of juvenile services, we would be desperate for functions that we, that are essential to the school district. Ms. Bannister?
Thanks, Sheriff Furlong. Ally Bannister, for the record, Chief of Juvenile Services. Just to reemphasize, our partnership with Carson City Sheriff's Office and the SROs is absolutely amazing. I also want to recognize that our partnership with the Carson City School District has been huge the last two years. We have implemented two new outreach specialists, and I invited Linda, who's our Deputy Chief up here, to share a few stats with all of you, just so you understand that I think the impact the School Resource Officers are having, as well as these, I believe, the two new positions that we have within the schools. We are currently, these two new positions, they are outreach juvenile specialist positions, and they are in the schools almost every day. They're facilitating programs such as Play by the Rules, which is in the middle schools in the seventh grade health class. They're also facilitating an anger management program, which is an evidence-based program. A forward-thinking program in in-school suspension, which is also evidence-based, and also the sworn program that we partner up with this Carson City Sheriff's Office and the elementary schools to facilitate. It's, we like to call it kind of the new dare program. They're teaching about drug enforcement, and you know, the signs of all of that. So, with that being said, I again want to emphasize our amazing partnership with the School Resource Officer. Sergeant Maris has been a, a great pick. For longer, I just, I can't emphasize the amount that he has contributed over the last several months with our office, and the impact that he's made with juvenile services, with the kids that we work with, and also within the Carson City School District. Our referrals are down, which is, I think, a great indication of the partnership that we have, and all are, you know, serving and working together. And that's why I invited Linda up here, because I thought that sharing some of the current statistics that we have come across in the last year just shows what, what's going on.
Linda Lawler, for the record, Deputy Chief. I am super excited that we have the opportunity to work in the school district. Early intervention is huge to keep kids out of probation and out of trouble in the schools. And just to share with you guys, our outreach specialists have done ninety-four classes in the school district in 2024, and touched three hundred and seventy-five students. They did twenty-four parent education nights in, in the 2024, and I think, you know, I'd like to do more and have higher attendance, but our referrals went down nine point nine percent. We've had this position in two years, and our referrals are outrageous. They're still outrageous, but they went down just under ten percent. So I think that is evidence that what we're doing is working, what the School Resource Officers are doing, their presence in the schools, those numbers are going down. I, I'd like to share that we have two important classes going on this week, on the sixteenth, at Carson Middle School. We're doing a Spanish-speaking class on vaping at Carson Middle School. And then, on the twenty-eighth of January, we're doing one on truancy at our office at six o'clock. Mr. Zona is going to assist with that. I think this partnership is super important, and I wanted to just share that our outreach specialists, they're going to start a train, the trainer training on a new program that focuses on elementary school. I think we have a lot of programs for the older kids, and this is a great program that I hope we get to share with the schools in the future. Thank you.
And with that, it's my pleasure to introduce Bearded. Our, our deputies and sergeants and captains have entered into a benefit for the Boys and Girls Club, which our SROs also cover. He has one heck of a task to do. So, thank you, Taylor, Sergeant.
Well, thank you, guys. That's a lot of really nice words, I appreciate it, Sheriff and Chief Bannister. I mean, really, all I do is just steer the work of, of the SROs. So, congratulations, everybody, seems like everybody got a promotion of some sort today, and new member, so. So, I'm Sergeant Taylor Maris, have been with the Sheriff's Office about ten years, have kind of a pretty smooth journey, a lot of openings and experiences at a younger tenure. So I've, I've bounced around quite a bit through, through the Sheriff's Office into the position I'm in now. Our SRO group, made up of five people, we have two at the high school. I have Deputy Palomar there, and Deputy Nunez. Through middle schools, I have Deputy Correo at Carson Middle School. I have Deputy Isinger at Eagle Valley, and then covering elementary, and just kind of roving and assisting is Deputy Kepler. Deputy Kepler has the only canine within our department that is imprinted on all of the narcotics, but including marijuana. We try and use him as a presence, and we use him, I would say, at least weekly, to keep everybody kind of on their toes. Deputy Kepler does go around to all the elementary schools. I would say, when I go to the schools and I'm walking around, they ask where Camper is, which is the canine, and they don't even know Deputy Kepler's name, so. Huge, huge, huge impact it has on the kids. We've used Camper just as rewards, too, for behavior kids, which have been, has been successful. Main role of the SROs is obviously just gonna be the safety for the students and staff. Our SROs are also tasked with counseling sessions, that's sitting down with kids, talking about home life, talking about school, sports, girlfriend, boyfriends, you name it. It's a, they cover a wide, wide array there. The mentorship for some of these, for some of the juveniles is also something that comes up frequently. And then mostly is just providing resources. As a whole, I would say, kind of in the, in the most, the Mobile Outreach Safety Team, the term that they use a lot is, we just wrap everyone in services. As SROs, we're, we're highly wrapped. We have the DA's office, we have an amazing support from them, constant communication. DA Brandon is always on her phone answering questions for us. Our, our partnership with JPO has been absolutely terrific. They're coming out to sporting events with us. We're doing, going to homes with them. When they come into the school, they're, they're working together. It's, it's been terrific. And these kids know that if you get one, you're gonna get both, which is terrific, so. Also, the school district, AJ's been absolutely amazing, and it goes down even within the schools, from the principals, the counselors, the social workers, to the staff. I mean, we're, we're extremely supported, so we're very thankful for that. We have five, and there's, what, ten schools in the school district? So five SROs, ten schools. We do have some of our deputies who have secondary assignments, either like on SWAT teams, they're on, you know, crisis negotiation, they have other duties and tasks that aren't daily, but come up. Our guys and gal move fluid between all of the schools. They do a terrific job of jumping in. Not only are they taking ownership and pride of their school, sometimes we have to remind them, like, hey, you know, you work for the Sheriff's Office, you know, this, the school, you're doing a terrific job, but remember, you're still a cop, you still work for the Sheriff's Office. So, they're constantly moving around and working together and communicating, so that's been great. So, so far this year, we've seen a decrease. We had a, an increase early in the year, especially of threats with violence. Again, school district jumped right in. Dan Davis put out some educational things, just working jointly and getting this stuff handled, either the education or the notification out to people. We have not, knock on wood, had any threats of violence. I would say it's been over a month? Yeah. Which is good, we're on a little bit of a roll there in the beginning, but again, the educational piece came in. I could talk all day long. Any of you guys have any questions, feel free. We would love to chat, go over more. AJ and I talked for an hour and twenty minutes this morning, so any questions, please feel free to reach out, we're.
Trustee Walker?
So, you know, initially, when I saw Linda, I thought, oh my gosh, we're not doing Family Life again today. So I feel like you've been in here tons for that, but seriously, you know, as a former administrator in the district, I know how hard and how collaborative both departments work with our schools. So, juvenile probation, remember, our Trustee Clappam, as well as Ally and Linda, worked with us, and then. with us, and then the sheriff's team, SROs and deputies, and well, really, all of your resources. Anytime there's a need, you guys are right there. So I always appreciate that, because I know when we get an alert from AJ that he has backup right away. So I appreciate that. My question is a little bit, you know, going through funding, because it is an expensive expenditure for both departments. Are we still receiving grant funding as this funded through our general fund? I just think with new trustees, maybe that discussion would be great.
Yeah, and I guess a little bit of history with this. So the program has existed for some time. Sheriff Furlong, back in, I think, 2015 or so, applied for and received the COPS grant, I think it was called, and was able to expand some more of the support. And after four years, that grant went away, and so we had to work it out to continue funding that. So basically, about half of the program comes out of our general fund, about half from the city. But the, you know, we've been able to maintain that level of staffing that we had since that grant went away. Sheriff Furlong, if you want to add to that at all, but.
The grant went away quite a few years ago. We're on both sides of the House, general funding these programs.
Is this adequately meeting our need? Is this something that we should look at going forward? Are we needing more support with the program? I mean, it seems like some years, there's a little bit more action than others, so it's hard to gauge.
Yeah, I, from my perspective, I think our, I mean, I really gauge it based on what our school administrators are saying, because they're the ones working with our SROs every day. And I think overwhelmingly, our folks are very happy with the level of service, the availability. And Sergeant Maris being brand spanking new to this world has jumped right in and is, you know, again, very visible in our schools, in, you know, we've had more communication this year than I probably would have liked at certain times, but very much appreciated. It's just been a great, great support for our schools and a great support for me in certain situations that have come up. So I think where we are right now, and as active and visible as everyone is, I think we're in a pretty good place.
Any other questions from the board?
No, I don't, oops. I don't have a question, I just have a comment. So first, thank you for your service, but, I mean, I'm not in the schools day in and day out, but I really appreciate the visibility during the athletic events. There, and there's no threat. So when they're at the events, the kids, you know, the students go up to them, and it's just, like you said, it's a whole lot of socializing and talking about this and that. And so it's comfort, which I think then is what is needed, and it helps, I think, the students and the schools as well. So I just appreciate that visibility, you know, and seeing that interaction during those sporting events, so thank you for that.
Shell?
I'll echo Molly as well. A quick memory flashback, I volunteered at Safe Grad this last year, and one of the SRO deputies was there for the overnight, and it was at the go-kart tracks. And the owners of the go-kart place, they have one that is made up, yeah, it was Palomar. It's dressed up to be a police car. And after things started dying down, he got in that and got out on the track, and it has a siren and a light that flashes, and he would duck into little corners, and as people went driving by, he would light them up and chase them around the track. Or there were some times where they would do a lap together, and the amount of kids that stopped what they were doing to line up along the fence and cheer on, they weren't cheering their friends, they were cheering on the officer as he was engaging with the kids. And it just made me smile, and I really appreciate that relationship, because having that presence, having that familiarity, just knowing that they are there, and they can build that relationship, and they engage, like Molly was saying, that they are not just a looming presence, but they're a tangible level of security. And as those relationships get established, and if kids do feel like there's something that they need to talk to somebody about, or there's a threat that they need to address, they're not going into an unknown territory with an unknown person, they're going to somebody that they already have exposure with and have a relationship with. And so I really appreciate those of you who step up and say, I'll do it, I'll go into the schools, and I appreciate you making sure that we have great officers there. So just thank you for doing what you do.
So in closing, we have had a tremendous year so far, thanks to the school district's adjustments in how we're working with the children this year, resources availability. We continue to monitor activities. We have quite a few mechanisms for reporting incidents, both anonymously and in person, if you will. All of those are actively monitored in our dispatch center, as well as by our SRO teams, so that we're able to respond 24 hours a day and not wait for the next day. Each of the officers, along with the juvenile probation officers, is dedicated to our school district to make sure that our children and our faculties are as safe as possible. I would add in that in addition to all of this, our patrol division stands readily available to augment Taylor and his team at any time that they need to, and they very often do it around the clock. So if there's no more questions, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Richard Burner?
Without me asking something. My question was kind of like Mike's. Are five officers adequate to cover the 10 schools? And it's kind of sounds like it is, but because I believe in this program, I think it needs to be supported, and I think it's absolutely critical in the times we're living in to have officers in, available in the schools. We don't need to mention what's going on around the country, everybody knows, but I just want to make sure that the five officers have time to adequately cover the schools. I guess that's number one. And the second question, if I could, real quick, is do you see the incidence at the schools going up or down, where you guys have to respond to them?
Going up or down?
Well, I mean, are you getting more calls of service at the school versus are the incidents of different things going down?
First question, are five adequate? Would love to have 15, but we know that there are budget constraints. I believe very strongly that our five is a good commitment to our schools. When we have incidents that occur, both juvenile and the patrol division are readily available, and available is probably not the right word. They're responding as well. So we have a tremendous workforce that are supporting the schools. The five are there for the regular activities, and I think that that's an important distinction to make. Taylor's been on several, little bit more serious incidents this year, and the resources that are committed when those incidents occur, you could have 10, 15. So adequacy, I share with Ally Bannister the notion that support to juvenile services is an avenue for the future that we may want to look at. I think that our calls for service support that. We're doing well this year. I just put out the annual, the 2024 Wellness of Carson City, and our juveniles are not a tremendous problem. Our juveniles this year have been an advantage, and that's a complement to the district entirely. Each school, each administrator, each instructor, teacher, we've had a good year. The five is adequate for normal operations. When those operations surge, we have quite a bit of support between Juval and our patrol division. So yeah, if there was something we wanted to look at in the future, and AJ and I speak about this pretty frequently, where do we see the needs and where can we fill any cracks? Because I don't think there are gaps, there may be cracks.
Thank you. And also, I was very glad to hear about the relationship you have with JPO and the sheriff's office. Thank you for what you're doing. I think the officers being in the schools and juvenile probation being in the schools is very, very important, and hopefully it's paying off, I think it is. Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure to recognize, because there's times we've had situations in schools, and we also have legislative police officers responding and highway patrol. So I think just that cooperation is key, and I think Carson City is very fortunate because we do have so many resources in our city, where in some of the rural districts, everybody's spread out and it's very thin. So I mean, we're very fortunate to not only have those five people, but there really is an arsenal of people that are protecting these schools, and that always makes me feel really good.
That's a very important point. The key to a success in law enforcement and crime fighting is that overlap in jurisdictional responsibilities and how well those agencies work together. We have the, probably the best I can hope for in those relationships and feet on the ground.
If I can make one more comment, I'm sorry.
Of course.
Sheriff Furlong, congratulations. I know you're the longest-serving sheriff in Carson City, and perhaps in the state.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate the opportunity to feed back to that. That's a result of the folks that are out there with the kids, with the families, in the neighborhoods, responding to the calls for service. The way our officers, our probation officers, and the way the criminal justice system responds to the community is reflective of that achievement. It's not just me, it's everyone out there working in one direction, and that's why I so much pleasure coming to this board and communicating, as well as hearing, you know, some of the concerns, because we want to stay connected and all going on the same path in the same direction. So thank you very much, I appreciate that.
You're being very humble. I've had the opportunity to work with you personally over the years, and a lot of-
You didn't think I was going to succeed, did you?
Sometimes I wondered, but seriously, you're a big part, if not the major part, of the success that Carson City Sheriff's Office has had.
Thank you, I appreciate it very much.
Well, thank you. I also want to add, thank you for keeping our students safe, and also, I observe, when you're out there in the community, which is all the time, I always see the kids come up to you and hug you and everything, so it's just a wonderful thing to see in kids, because they look up to you guys, they look up to you guys, and, you know, you are the role model, so thank you for that and for everything, and thank you for coming tonight. So.
Okay, moving on. Okay, moving on to agenda item number 15, discussion and possible action to approve a monetary incentive for early notification from administrative certified and classified staff of their intent to resign, retire from the Carson City School District at the conclusion of the 2024-2025 school year, which may have a fiscal impact not to exceed $40,000 within the current budget cycle, and this is for possible action. Superintendent Andrew Feeling and Mr. Dan Sattler.
Thank you, Madam President, excuse me, members of the board. My pleasure to be here this evening. For those of you who were here last year, we presented some information and got your support in an incentive for people notifying in an early timeframe to the district if they were planning on resigning or retiring. As you may recall, we spent a lot of time talking about that resignation being included versus a retirement, and so I'll kind of talk through how that looked last year and why we're here again to ask for your support in this. Just wanted to highlight a couple of the things that really have benefited us with the advanced notifications. So typically, well, for several years, positions wouldn't really get posted until March at the earliest, and then we're kind of struggling to fill those positions, you know, as the school year wraps up. And then typically, by the time summer rolls around, it's kind of slim pickings. And education, just as an industry of employers, has struggled across the United States. This is not specific to Carson City or to Nevada. The fact of the matter is, we just don't have enough people who are graduating from educational institutions, majoring in education, to fill teaching positions. But the impact is further, it impacts us more than just teaching positions because of our classified positions. Our ESP employees are critical to our mission and vision to ensure that our students get the services they need to be successful. And so that timely hiring, like getting those positions posted earlier, gives us a better opportunity to get people hired into positions. While we do provide, or we did provide a monetary incentive last year, it's actually reduced our costs as far as the time that we're spending onboarding and recruiting people to get those positions filled early. Definitely helps with our planning, both being just proactive and staffing decisions for next year. We've already started our preliminary staffing conversations at the district level, based on current enrollment and enrollment projections. And so again, if we know we're going to have some vacancies, that helps us with the budget planning and being proactive. Recruitment definitely is something that we've spent a lot of time doing, both locally and regionally, including some of the West Coast. We've kind of tried some different things over the years and kind of really honed in on just localized here, and then some of the Northern California universities, and have a good partnership there. Obviously, working with WNC and UNR has really been fruitful. Our partner with ITech has been tremendous. We've put a lot of people in the classroom through ITech, so that local recruitment, definitely, if we know we have positions, then when we're having those recruitment events, we can talk to prospective employees about actual positions that we know we have open. And then obviously, we want to be able to support our employees, and it's a struggle, as we all know, when we start a school year and we have vacant positions, because then it's a burden on everybody trying to cover those services. So just a couple highlights in why we looked at doing this in the first place. So wanted to just share some historical data here. Over the previous three school years, you'll see in the blue the total number of resignations and retirements, and while that may look like a really huge number, back in 2021, 2022, over the last two years, we've reduced these numbers considerably. So you can see, we had a total of 187 ending the '22 school year, 112 ending the '23 school year, and then 97 ending last school year. The orange or red, depending on your eyes, how it looks at that, is the number of those people who actually completed their full contract year. And so sometimes we have people who might have a family emergency, or somebody gets relocated for their job, or sometimes somebody just quits their job. But the orange color represents those that actually completed the school year in those positions. Yep.
Is that like 66 of the 97?
Correct.
Or 60? Okay.
Yes. All categories, yes. This was a breakdown from last school year, as far as like when we receive notifications. And I was before here, before the board in January last year, asking for support, and you can see that we had numbers jump up a little bit there in February. We had 17 people who notified us of retirement or resignation in the month of February, and then you can kind of see, as we go through the remainder of the school, in March, April, numbers are still quite low, a little bit of a bump in May, a couple of numbers in June and July. But overall, this was a reduction from years previous. Getting that early incentive and notification helped us out tremendously. I did do a little bit of tracking, because I thought there might be a question about, well, how many of these positions did we fill? And so of the positions that we filled last year, we ended up with 38 vacancies, and, excuse me, I'm going to jump back two years. In 2023, we started the school year with 38 vacant positions district-wide, so that includes all employee categories. Last year, we reduced that number to 28, and of those 28, 11 of those positions were notifications that we received in July. So it really did make a significant difference for us, as far as just getting, again, getting positions posted, communicated, and then getting people hired. So just to highlight some of the details, this is what our ask was and what we supported last year. So we did a $1,000 per employee, up to a total of $40,000 vacancy savings. We did have some discussion last year about, well, what if we had more people than that? And if that was the case, we would come back and ask the board to support a number that we think is reasonable. We did not spend that much last year. I believe we had 32 that actually submitted and completed last year, so we were under that budget. We did have a requirement to be a full-time- We did have a requirement to be a full-time benefited employee. It must have been their first resignation or retirement from the district, and they couldn't have been on critical needs. I think that was really important. Must have completed five years of employment with the school district. Employee must have completed and submitted the form to HR by March 1st. Really key is that they must complete the last day of work in the contract or the fiscal year so that they're not just bailing right now. And so those incentives were awarded at the completion of their contract year or the fiscal year, depending on what class of employee and their work schedule. And again, that's the reference on the last bullet there. The incentive was paid on the final check. Yes, sir.
This is a question that kind of goes with this. I've had some people in the district reach out to me that have been with the district for all of their career or over 20 years. And so the request I've received is, is there a way to look at differentiating that amount based on the tenure of the employee? And I'm wondering if you think that would have an impact and what the district's position about that might be.
Yeah, it's a good question. And really, the way that we recognize those employees, and we do it in all of our employee agreements, is through longevity pay. And we did increase longevity pay for all of our employee groups through the last negotiations. So all of those numbers were bumped up quite a bit. So basically, the longer people work with us, then the more the chance they have to earn that incentive. And it is basically like a yearly bonus as far as the way they receive that money.
I have something. How many people put in for the program before March 1st versus how many afterwards? I know it was up on the screen, but I didn't really. Looked like there's still quite a few after March 1st that didn't take advantage of it.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. And plans change, people change, and, you know, opportunities fluctuate. And it'd be fantastic, like if everybody knew exactly what their plans were going to be by March 1st, but it just wasn't reality. There was a large enough number of positions that we're able to post that it did make a significant difference for closing and filling those positions. But you're absolutely right, there's still some that we get that are late notice.
Yeah, I would agree with Mike. I think if there's some way to reward somebody who's been here 30 years with a little bit of extra money versus somebody who's only been here for five years, you know, when they decide to retire or move on.
So just to clarify what I was referring to with the longevity pay, is if you're in district right now, I have some of the numbers here, like for teachers specifically, like if you've been in district as a teacher or certified staff, you get a $1,000 stipend at the end of each contract year. If you're here 15 to 19 years, it goes up to $1,500. 20 years to 24 is $2,000, and 25 plus is $4,000.
If I'm not mistaken, what Mike was talking about, what I'm talking about is for this particular program, the $1,000, you know, somebody who's been here 30 years, maybe they get the $1,000. Somebody who's been here five years, maybe they get $500 for early retirement notification.
Sure.
Okay. So I remember asking the same question as last year as well. And the response wasn't, it made sense, is, so if we're budgeting $40,000 and we're going to say, okay, you know, if you've done 30 years, you get X amount of dollars. And if you give 10 years, you get X amount of dollars. How is he going to budget that? And how is that going to be coming to the board not to exceed $40,000? Because you're not quite sure, and this is the example you gave me last year, is you're not quite sure is, you know, how many 20 years employees are going to be retiring? How many 25-year employees to that? I think it was more of the budget not to exceed $40,000. If everybody gets a $1,000, we know that's 40, you know, 40 employees is what we're going to, that's what I was explained as last year.
The point I'd like to make too, that I think is important is, you know, if within everyone's contract, they're getting recognized for those extra years, that's really, you know, that recognition at that point. I think in this respect, we're placing value on simply that notification and getting notified. You know, we're really, I think, very much recognizing that whether you're a classified employee, a certified employee, this is something that really helps us out, wherever you are, whatever your position is. And so it kind of puts an even playing field out there and equal recognition for all those employees, regardless of the circumstance or the type of position that they fill.
And I just want to reiterate too, that we don't want any of our employees to leave. And so it's kind of like, well, then why would you offer an incentive for someone to leave? Well, a lot of people are nearing their end of their career or have plans that are going to be changing. And so again, getting that early notification just increases our chances of filling those positions with the best candidates that we're able to find. So in no way do we want this to come across as, hey, we want everyone to leave the district. And I think that $1,000 is not a substantial amount of money, but it's enough for someone to say, oh, I know I'm leaving. I probably should get my stuff turned in so that I get that. And that's also part of the reason why it's not an ask for $10,000 per person, because we don't want to encourage people to leave. We want to support them and their continuing in their career. And truth be told, when people are retiring, like that is a celebration, especially those people who've been here for, you know, 25, 30 years, and they've really dedicated their careers to supporting Carson City schools and students. That is a celebration, but we want to get it filled as quickly as we can.
Trustee Peterson and then Molly, I'm sorry, right? You had a question?
Yeah, I was just going to point out, I think it's an important distinction to realize that this isn't a thank you for your service. This is a thank you for the heads up.
Yes.
There are many other ways that people are celebrated and compensated for their dedication and metered out for the service that they've given. This is just thanks for the heads up so we can get a jump on it.
Trustee Walt? Okay.
I'll just add, in the county I work in, this program is in place and it has been for a while. And regardless of tenure or position, so early incentive for administrators is the same as for teachers, for classified employees. And so I think one of the nice things about it is, there's not that competition. Nobody's feelings are hurt because Mike got $1,500, but Molly only got $700. You know, I mean, it's, it just, they know what it is. And it's like I was saying to Lupe, it's a little trip away somewhere. It's a weekend, it's a little incentive.
Couple trips to the grocery store. Yeah. So again, the deadline last year that we asked for and supported was March 1st. These were, I had said 32 incorrectly, it was 28 incentives. I think I knew that, but I had forgotten while I was speaking. Just kind of some numbers. We had 15 certified employees last year, one administrator, 12 ESP employees. Average years with the district last year was 20.71. And there was a range between six to 33 years for the people that qualified for the incentive last year. 28 total, correct.
Quick question, why March 1st and not like April 1st?
Earlier the better.
Yeah, just because of the job fairs and whatnot.
By April, other districts are also posting. And so like last year, we were the first to post, and we got first dibs on people when they were looking for positions, for sure. So just a couple of recommendations that I have here. I did put a calendar there in circle February 28th because March 1st falls on a weekend. So it would be, the request would be to have that submitted by the last Friday in February. Eligibility criteria, five consecutive years. The word consecutive wasn't there previously, so that was just one add. So that if somebody previously worked for us and they came back just for one year, like, no, it needs to be consecutive years as far as their employment with the district. Again, February 28th would be submitted to human resources. We'd provide a form, make sure that everyone in the district was aware of that form and available to them. And then the payment terms, again, would be the final period check that they receive after their last contract date.
Just a note, some of you may be thinking, well, if it's better to get notice earlier, why wouldn't we move the date up even earlier than that? And it's trying to be respectful, especially of those who are considering retirement, that there's time. So from, effectively from potential approval tonight, there's about six and a half weeks until we get to the 28th. So there's time for employees who, if they are considering retiring, if they need to make that trip to PERS or have conversations with their families, they have that time to make some of those things happen. So, you know, this date allows that, and yet still puts us ahead of the rest of the pack in terms of the hiring process.
And just one more point. When we talk about $40,000, like that's a larger chunk, but we did utilize vacancy savings for those payments last year.
Oh, okay.
It would do the same this year.
Thank you, any other questions?
I just want to thank you for the work you do trying to recruit and retain teachers. I think you've done a good job. Just one quick question. How many critical need certified staff do we have now? And then...
You're really putting me on the spot there. And typically, I know these answers. AJ quizzes me on this stuff all the time. We have fewer than 10, but yeah, it's seven or eight, and it's mixed. We have a couple who are ESP employees and a handful that are teachers.
What about long-term subs?
We have some substitutes that are back on critical needs, for sure. But that's really just helped us get them into substitute teaching in the classroom sooner, rather than having to wait for PERS and all of that. So how many of our long-term subs are critical?
Are filling the classroom?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was still linking it to critical needs, I'm sorry. Yeah, we have, I think we have 11 long-term subs right now. Some of those have also then gone the ITech route, and they're completing their endorsement to secure an ARL alternative routes to licensure endorsement. But those numbers are also down this year from years past. We started the school year, as far as, and we did review this in August, but we certainly don't remember. We had reduced our vacancy rates from 7% in '23 and '24 to start the school year. This school year for certified staff, it was 2.1%. And classified went from 7% to 4.4%. And so there's still, we're not 100% full. But I would say we're probably in the best shape in the state as far as the data goes.
Yeah. Well, I'd say if you two think this is a good program and it helps us recruit teachers, then I think we should support it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Rebecca.
Just one quick question. You said it gets paid out at the end, the last contract date of that year, that school year. And then notice by February 28th this year. Generally, I think if you gave your resignation or retirement notice, you're pretty confident in your next step or plans. If that were to fall through though, is it binding once they give that notice? Because I know you're trying to get staff hired, so.
Sure. Per agreement, the resignation is binding unless it's overturned by the board. So if somebody submitted their resignation and then said, oh, wait, things have changed, you would be then asked to overturn that.
Go ahead.
I'll shed, and then I think it's a great program. And as I, obviously, I just came off the campaign trail. And questions that would get asked often is about recruiting and retaining quality teachers, and what can we do to make sure that we have the best? And I think this is a great step in answering that question by getting our names out there early and our jobs posted sooner. We can have pick of the litter. And so good job for being innovative and coming up with a solution to that.
Thank you.
Hey, if there are, do you have another question? Okay, go ahead.
All right, I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve monetary incentive for early notification from administrative certified classified staff of their intent to retire from the Carson City School District at the conclusion of the 2024-25 school year, which may have a fiscal impact not to exceed $40,000 within the current budget cycle.
I'll second it.
Trustee Walt, just for clarity on the record, is it resign and retire?
Resign or retire. So sorry.
And seconded, okay, so moved by trustee Walt and seconded by trustee Varner. Any board discussion? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you. Yeah, now don't leave, like, stay.
Okay, so agenda item number 16, approval of the consent agenda. And this is for possible action. Do we have a second? Michelle? Okay. So motion by trustee Walt, seconded by trustee, by Michelle? Yes. Also, any board discussion? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And agenda item number 17, informational items. And this is for discussion only, no action will be taken. And I presume everyone has had a chance to review this. So we will, before we move on to agenda number 18, I would like to remind the trustees to stay for pictures with Mr. Davis. And then we'll move on to agenda item number 18, request for future agenda items.
So, Madam President, before COVID, when I was vice president last time, trustee Wilkie and I were starting to put together a plan to make some changes to our employee of the year recognition program. And the thought being moving it away from an official meeting to more of a ceremony where we honor people because a meeting just feels a little bit awkward in that setting. And so I would propose, we put on the budget a discussion to see if there's an appetite from the board to start that discussion again. And I personally think that it would be a nice thing to change.
Thank you. We'll get that on the agenda. Any other future agenda topics?
Yes, I've been asking for an update on Jump Start.
Excellent.
Informative, if I can get that.
Okay, good. We'll put that on the future agenda. Okay, any others? Okay. If there are no other future agenda items, we'll move on to agenda number 19, which is adjournment. Thank you so much, everyone. I got so nervous, I got so nervous.